Previously on The Walking Dead.
No! You monsters!
You're a piece of work, you know that?
Fucking Garcia's! You, you, you shook my goddamn guts out!
Conrad?
What? Ain't got the guts to kill another man.
No. You're not a man. You're nothing.
Joan was in on it! We did it on her orders! I'm, I'm sorry.
It is too late for sorry, you backstabbing shitbag!
I'll help you. I'll, I'll tell everyone in Richmond about this.
We don't need your help.
I'm begging you!
Come on, we have to hurry.
Wait a second, David told us to come here.
He's talking to the others now. Trust me, shit's about to fly.
I knew I could count on you, brother.
They were our family, David. How could you?
Piece of shit! I'll give you family!
Damn it!
Strike one!
I'm out of practice, that's all.
Yeah, same here. I haven't held a bat since the league booted me.
Well, you got all afternoon to get back in your groove.
Oh yeah, just holding this thing makes me feel better. You doing okay?
Uh, I've been wrestling with something.
Hey! Hey man, you're Javier Garcia, right? The ballplayer? Can I get your autograph? If you could sign my baseball, that would be so awesome!
Sure thing, kid.
Oh man, thank you!
Who do I make this out to?
Oh, no, no, no names. Band player's signatures are worth way more on resale than personalized crap. Just your name is fine. What the hell is this?
You wanna make money? Get a job.
Whatever.
Gotta keep those fans happy, big star. Let's get back to baseball.
Swing and a miss!
You don't have to start sucking because of me. Does talking like that make you feel better?
Yeah, you should try it. Son of a bitch! Strike two!
Ben, knock that shit off! I'm serious. You just talk, talk, talk!
I'm not stopping. This is way too much fun.
I'm not kidding.
Garcia is going ballistic!
I still can't believe you actually wanted to come here. If I were in your situation, I'd avoid batting cages forever.
Well, thanks for bringing me anyway. I needed the distraction. Jeez, I can't catch a break.
Oh, you could hit it if you wanted to. Next time, we go to the shooting range.
I don't really shoot.
But I do, and I'm good at it. Fuck! You gotta shut up!
Stupid thing. My arm's throbbing.
Garcia takes one for the team, that's gotta hurt!
God damn it, Javi, I fucking warned you! I remember I showed you how to play this game.
Well, let this superstar return the favor. Watch this. Man, I really suck today.
Yeah, sure you do.
I think I got a few more swings in me. You in? Aw, David! David, knock off the tantrum! Grow up!
You just can't resist making your little digs, can you? Once again, it's Javi the Star thinking he's better than me. That's gonna change.
What's going on? David? I don't understand.
You don't understand because you only think about yourself. And I'm sick of it. It's been that way for years.
I'm just... Sick of your attitude, David.
You love to mock me. But you have no idea what I deal with. My job sucks. Kate and I fight like cats and dogs. I belong back in the Army. I had a purpose there. I had respect.
Dude, going back to the Army isn't gonna fix what's wrong with your life. You should just, you know, think this through a little more.
I have been thinking it through. For months. Things between me and Kate have been going downhill for a while. But if I left... It seemed like that would be best for everyone. I can't keep pretending this is the life I want. Not anymore.
No, the kids are too young for you to leave them. You gotta be around the, you know, coach them on stuff.
What the hell do you know about raising children, Javi? I'm not gonna lie. If I go, it's gonna be hard on everyone. Kate may need help from time to time. You can help, right? You won't leave her hanging? I need to know that.
It's your family, David, not mine. You gotta stay here to help them.
Typical selfish... You don't know shit about family. Come on. I wanna get out of here now.
Get in there!
I let you go. On the road, remember? Can't you help us now?
Most I remember is why I haven't shot you already. That's how I'm helping you.
Joan's making a huge mistake.
No, you made a mistake when you murdered Lonnie.
Hey, everybody just take a breath, alright? I was just trying to tell them- And that's your mistake right there. You can't fight everybody. Understand that Joan's not looking for revenge. She just wants order. Cooperation is the name of the game. There's still a way through this.
I know you Richmond folks are a little flexible when it comes to doing what's right. I don't buckle just 'cause it's the easy thing to do.
You talk a big game. But talk isn't gonna get you out of this mess. You boys wanna make it out of here? Just relax and trust in the process.
This is bad. What are we gonna do?
I killed Lonnie. Christ. How could he turn on me like that?
David, hey!
I thought I had it handled. All of this is my goddamn fault. I should've seen it coming. But I dropped the ball. Big time.
Joan lied. You couldn't have anticipated that. It was a sneak attack.
I'm glad you see that. You may be the only one. I keep doing this, making the same stupid mistakes.
You're still a hero to Gabe. There's still a lot you can teach him. This world needs all the heroes it can find.
That's my boy. Listen to me carefully. I don't care what's gonna happen to me. I'm most worried about Kate and Gabe. They gotta survive. No matter what.
You can count on them, okay? Kate's level head got us out of more than a few jams.
Yeah. Okay. No matter what we do, Joan's already poisoned this well. We've gotta figure a way out of Richmond.
All of us?
All of us. This time tomorrow, we'll be together and safe.
We can beat this. Together.
So glad to see you boys getting along.
Armed escort? You're that scared to face me?
Oh, David. I'm not scared of you. I came here to talk, not fight. You're not gonna be a problem, are you? I just want a calm discussion. Between us.
If you try to hurt David, I'm gonna be a huge problem.
No, you'll just get yourself hurt. People had concerns about me coming here. After the way you murdered Lonnie, David. But I know what the real danger here is. And you need to hear about it.
We both know the real danger here is you.
I'm not sure what kind of person you imagine me to be. But it's not true. Those raids were unfortunate, but necessary. The real danger was another long winter.
I should've been told about this!
David, you remember how many friends we lost last year? I couldn't bear to see it happen again. Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna call for a gathering in the square. The people deserve to hear a full explanation of your arrest.
And then?
Then, you'll be replaced as head of security. No one's above the law, David. Not even you.
I know the laws, Joan. You're the one breaking them. This place could've been something. Something good. And you ruined it.
This place needs me to keep it safe.
You set me up! Everyone's gonna see through your lies!
I did what I had to do to keep the people of Richmond safe. They're going to see that. And they'll also see that the biggest threat to them right now is you. We'll debate all of this in the morning. Right now, David, I need to ask you some questions. In private. Bring him with us.
Screw this. Gotta get out of here. Could squeeze through there. Nothing useful here. Don't wanna bust my hand. I'm not gonna get up there from this bench.
I've been looking everywhere for you.
Gabe?
Where'd they take Dad?
I don't know yet. Help me get out of here. These bars are loose. Help me pry them off.
I can't do it. Can you help?
Nice work, Gabe. Now, give me a hand. What's all that noise?
It's a herd. They're outside the walls. This way, come on. Kate didn't wanna stay at Dad's house.
Where are you taking me?
Eleanor found a place. She sent me to find you. While they hide out.
Is Eleanor's place safer?
I don't know. Safe enough, I guess. Trip's there. He wouldn't let anything happen to her.
We should probably keep moving. I can't believe you found me.
I looked everywhere.
Nice work. Thank you. They still got your dad, though.
He's gonna be okay, right? I mean, these are his people. They're just arguing, aren't they?
It's too late to do anything for him. I need to focus on keeping you and Kate safe.
It's never too late for him. Ever.
All clear. Come on.
Kate keeps pushing us to leave. You have to make her stay. We have to stay until Dad's free. We can't leave Dad here. Not after we found him again.
I think she's right. We have to get out of here before it's too late.
No! You never listen to me. This is important.
Hold up.
Everything's gone wrong here, hasn't it? We should be safe in this town. You shouldn't be a prisoner.
It's bad. This place is going to hell. We're gonna need to find somewhere to lay low and hope for the best.
With Dad. Don't forget about Dad. That's Eleanor's place. We made it.
Great. Let's get in there.
Oh, that was close.
Yeah.
This wasn't so busy before. What are they up to?
Come on. Let's get inside.
Well... I've been thinking hard about this and... I really think we should be... A thing.
I'm sorry. I don't know if I feel like that. That... Way. Look... I just don't know. It's shown me that I'm good at helping people.
Uh, hi. Kate.
But I can't do anything here. You know they don't want any of the rest of us like they want you!
I wouldn't go in there if I were you. They've escalated past their same old usual argument. Never heard it this bad. That's some rough shit right there. I'm gonna try to get some shut eye.
I just can't do this now. Oh. Hey.
Uh, hey!
Trip! Look who's here.
Hey, guys.
Uh, hey!
Where have you been?
Joan threw me and David in jail. If you can believe it.
Great. So you gave these people more reason to hate us.
What is going on here in Richmond? You know more about this place than the rest of us.
We've gotta save my brother. He's still in their custody. And I'm scared what they might do to him.
Told you we couldn't trust them.
You were right.
I'm sorry about what's going on with David. But we should've gotten out of here when we had the chance. We still need to get out of here, Javi. Let's go.
You should go without me.
You wanna stay?
I want you to do whatever is the right thing for you.
Have you guys even looked out the window? Go look for yourself.
Holy shit.
Javi. Even if you did get your brother free... You're not gonna be able to go anywhere. Look at that. We should've left when we had a chance. Now we're stuck here.
I didn't make that happen. It's not my fault.
We had the opportunity. We should've gone.
Are you crazy?
I'd rather take my chances out there than in here. Then you're an idiot. Look at you. You wouldn't have lasted eight seconds past those walls.
It seems like we're in danger within this place and without. I for one, would feel a whole lot safer with a few more guns to protect ourselves.
That the smartest move to make right now? That's crazy.
He's my brother, Kate. I have to.
Okay.
We have to rescue David.
Damn straight we do.
And we might have to face los muertos.
I know where there's guns. My dad showed me. There are lots.
The armory. Good idea. A small group should go.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. We'll get back here as soon as we can.
Good luck. Come here.
Kate, I-
Just be careful.
Look, Javi, I, I don't know if you heard us, but... I think I fucked it up with Eleanor.
We can talk on the way.
About that, I... I don't think I can leave this apartment with things like this between me and her. It's just not right. I know you must've at least heard something.
You're being an idiot. Now isn't the right time for this.
You just don't understand. Just... Shouldn't have pushed it with her like I did. Wasn't fair. Too much going on already, right?
Javi, come on!
Just give us a minute, pal. I'm sorry, buddy, I just, I don't know what to do.
She doesn't want you, Trip. Get over it.
Damn it! I thought you were my friend! Thought you'd get it! I'll talk it over with Eleanor and watch over things here. You've got my word. I won't let anything happen to anyone.
Thank you.
Javi, come on!
Good luck.
Stay frosty, gents.
What's that mean?
Mike, stay cool, buddy.
Looks like Bob's on duty. I'll distract him away from the door and meet you inside. Be careful in there, there might be more of them.
Remember what I said about staying cool?
I've done this before, Javi.
No, you haven't, Gabe. Not really. Some decisions... You make them in a split second. And then have to carry them the rest of your life. You understand?
Yeah, I think I do. How can we trust Ava that she won't turn us in? Can we really trust her?
Your father trusts her. And we trust him, right?
Yeah.
Then we should be okay. I hope. I hope.
How do you know when you can trust someone? I feel like I've never really known anyone. Other than you and Kate... Mariana.
Through their actions. They can try to confuse you with their words, but someone worth your trust does good things.
Makes sense.
I think we're up. She sure is a big help. Ava said it'd be this way.
It's down here. The guns are through that door.
Locked. No time to look for a key either. Have to do this the hard way. Put these in your bag.
We've never done this before. Just you and me. We make a pretty good team, right? The Uncle-Nephew One-Two-Punch.
I just don't like putting you at risk. It's not that I don't appreciate your help, buddy.
Whatever.
Sorry to scare you. When we get back to Eleanor's, we need to talk to those people about doing the right thing by this place. I'll meet you at the entrance.
Come here!
Freeze!
Get away from me!
Javi... You're bleeding. Are you okay? Oh my god!
Damn it, Kate! Does it fucking look like I'm okay?
I'm sorry.
Jeez, I can't leave you guys alone for two minutes, can I? He's still alive?
Yeah. Just passed out.
Starting to think siding with you might have not been the best idea. Toss Sleeping Beauty in the closet so nobody sees him. Let me see that wound. It's really bleeding. You're gonna need that taken care of.
Shit.
No, it's okay. Lingard and David are close friends. We can count on him to help you.
Medical facility is right nearby.
It'll be quiet this time of night, too.
Okay. But let's be quick.
Can they really hit targets over a mile away?
Not these, but some models. Javi, it's probably best if Lingard doesn't see these guns. He and David might be tight, but he's still part of Richmond's Leadership Council.
I'll keep watch with Ava.
Okay.
Do any of them have laser sights?
Clem?
Shit, Javi, what happened to you?
Ran into a little trouble.
Wow, that looks like it must've hurt.
I just need to get it cleaned up.
You surprised me. Thought you were someone else.
Thought you'd be long gone by now.
So did I. But I still need to talk about AJ with Lingard. Look at him. Anyway, I can't leave Richmond with that herd out there.
Something tells me Lingard doesn't care what you're doing.
He's been out of it since I got here.
He's alive. Poor dumb bastard.
That's gonna need more than just cleaning, Javi. I can stitch that for you. I can't promise it'll look great once it heals. It's better than nothing, though.
Well... I don't think he's up to the job, so...
You'll be fine. I've dealt with worse. Let me see if I can find a needle and thread for that.
Clem? Are you okay?
I'm fine. I started... Bleeding. I know it's a thing. I've traveled with women before, and they all had it. What is it? I mean, like, why is it... I just don't understand.
It's totally normal. I mean, it's... Something female women have. It's, uh... What's next? It's not fun, I know that, but... Kate manages. You'll be fine, too.
Manages? How? I'm bleeding.
It's supposed to happen. You'll be fine, Clem. I promise.
Okay.
I can take you back to Kate. She can help you with, uh...
Javi, worry about yourself right now. We need to find a needle and thread to stitch you up first.
Uh, right.
Wake up! Talk to me! Wow. That guy is really out of it.
Penicillin. Not what I'm looking for. Jackpot. Needle and thread. All sterilized and ready to go. Cody? Not much left. And it looks like painkillers are in high demand.
I wouldn't steal any medicine if I were you. It really doesn't go over well.
Well, these could come in handy. Here we go. Just pills. Hey! This is just what you're looking for. They help you handle it. Kate'll take care of you.
Think I remember how to do this. Okay. Hold still. Try not to breathe.
Look, I know I'm probably not the best person to talk to about that stuff before.
You weren't that bad. Thanks for, you know, being here.
Basically, all this means is you could become a mom. If you wanted.
Funny. I already felt like a mom. Kenny used to say I was a natural-born mother.
It's a butterfly! Goofball, one another? Which one to do next? Hmm... How about... Bark, bark!
Down, boy! That's a pretty good dog. Always used to do that one for Duck. He'd laugh his ass off. Aw, shit. Hey, grab the lighter out the duffel, will ya?
Just a second, goofball.
Voila!
Hey! Get away from him!
Is he okay?
Shh. Still not bitten, little guy.
I know it seemed a lot at first, but... The way you've taken to AJ... I'm sure his mom is looking down from up there. Grateful for what you're doing. Always putting him first.
You've done as much for AJ as I have. Rebecca would be grateful for you, too.
Yeah, but you're the only mama he's got. Protective. Loving. Caring. All the things a good parent needs to be, in all at your age. But parenthood is a hell of a motivator, though. That's for sure. That kind of love.
It's worth fighting for.
I'm glad you didn't see what I did to Carver. But I did it for you.
I know.
Kid's as sick of the cold as I am. So I've been thinking. It's no use surviving out here, hoping that Wellington will take us in someday. I bet we find some good people down in Florida. Maybe even a little friend for this goofball. Wouldn't that be nice? We could use the company. Hell, I know I could.
AJ could use a friend his own age.
I remember when you and Duck used to color together back at the motel. Helped him forget about all this. For a moment, anyway. I'm sure it helped you, too. Life doesn't mean much without people you can relate to. Sarita always said... Family is what you make it. She was right. I'm sorry for all this sappy shit. I guess I'm just... Happy. First time in a while.
We're family, Kenny. All of us.
All right, all right, all right. Enough sap, Kenny. How about this one, little man?
We've got each other. As long as we have that... We'll be okay.
Whoa there, Clem. It's just me. What the hell do you want? I know how pissed you are, Clementine. Spitting on David really got that message across. Believe it or not, I'm actually... Sorry about what happened. It wasn't easy for any of us.
Fuck off!
I deserve that. I'm not here to upset you more.
Too late.
Look. It's not much, but... Here. David wanted you to have that. AJ drew it just after you-
Now you're just screwing with me.
No, Clem, we just-
Am I supposed to just thank you for this?
We just thought you'd want something to remember him by. Listen, it's dangerous out here, and right now... You're hurting. Whatever you do, you can't let what happened get to you. You need to keep a level head. Plan for after that. You're strong, but that won't get you far if you don't know what you're doing.
I can make it on my own, just like I always have. I don't need anybody else.
I don't blame you. Just don't overestimate what you're actually capable of. For me... Staying alive has always been about finding people I could trust as much as they trusted me. That's what the new frontier has been. A silver lining. Made me feel worth a damn. Kept me going in the worst of times. You'll find yours. I know you will. Someone... Or something... They're out there.
You may have needed one, but I don't.
Everybody needs one sooner or later. They're the only good things we have these days. From the first time we met, right here, surrounded by absolute hell. You and AJ were a light in the darkness. Hope for a better world. That's who you are. Promise me you'll never lose that light. Please. It's what makes you special, Clem.
Just go away already.
Okay. Okay. I should get back, before anyone notices I'm gone. I know you said you'd get by on your own, but... If you find yourself needing supplies... I know you said you'd get by on your own, but if you find yourself needing supplies... Or just someone to talk to... There's an old airfield, about ten or so miles south of here. Prescott. There are good people there. I'm sure they'll help you out. I'll miss having you around, Clem.
Are you leaving, or what?
I hope the best for you out there, kid. I really do.
That's what keeps me going. There's things I have to stay alive to do. So, what do you think? Think I'm getting better.
I owe you one.
Add it to the pile.
You coming?
I still have to ask Lingard about AJ.
Hello, Clementine. Javi. Thought you were rotting in a cell with David. Did any chance he got out, too? I hate to think about what Joan might do to him. Despite all her pleasantries... She's a cruel bitch.
It's none of your business.
There's... There's no need for that tone. I look like someone who... Gives a shit what you're up to. Frankly, I've had enough of backstabbing to last me a lifetime.
Why do you care if David got out? He deserves what's coming to him.
If you think that, you don't know David.
I know he's the reason I lost AJ.
When AJ recovered... David was the one who stepped up. Took personal responsibility for that kid.
You say that like it's a good thing. I really doubt he was a positive influence.
David's the reason the kid's better off now than... Than he's ever been. You can be as mad as you want... About how... About how things panned out.
Clem is AJ's family. No kid is better off when you break their family apart.
Maybe you're right. Maybe AJ should be with Clem. All I know is... That he's better than he was when he got here.
No thanks to you or David.
I stand by what I said.
If David's taken such good care of him, why did he tell me to ask you where AJ is?
That's what this is about, then? You... You wanna know where the boy is?
What do you want?
I... I just wanna die. I want you to inject this into me.
Are you crazy?
That's just the way it is. When your brother found me... He... He got me to care about everything I'd given up on. My life. Other people. Even this goddamn place. Without him around... I don't wanna care anymore.
Just tell me where he is!
Then you won't have any reason to do it.
I'm sorry, Clem, we can't do this.
No, I have to. If you won't, I will.
Clem, stop. He's not in his right mind. You can't do this.
Let go of me. I'm taking the deal.
We'll find AJ, just not this way.
There is no other way! Where is...
You can consider the deal.
No! Javi! How could you?
So be it. It's your funeral. Especially now... Now that Joan's rounding up all alleged traitors. You better... Hope she doesn't... Find you.
Hang in there, buddy.
Oh, hey. Hi, Clementine.
Surprised to see you here.
Yeah. Right back at you.
You all good?
Yeah. We're all set.
Let's roll.
Good to see you.
Javi, you're back! And Clementine.
Thanks for the warm welcome.
Just surprised to see you is all. Oh, hell. You okay?
Yeah. It looks worse than it is. Don't worry about it.
Kate's lying down in the other room for a bit.
So you got the guns, huh?
We got 'em, alright. One for you, and one for you. I saved this one for you.
No, I've already got one. Actually, it wouldn't hurt to have another. Thanks.
Conrad?
Nah, I'm cool.
What took you so long?
We went to see Dr. Lingard.
At night? I'm kinda surprised he was sober. It's gotta be a stressful job. Looking after an entire community?
The guy's clearly an addict. He was destroyed when we got there.
It would be sad if it wasn't so reckless.
It's pathetic, is what it is.
Why don't you go talk to Kate? Okay?
Okay.
The sun will be rising in a few hours. Joan's people know we're holed up here, and they're gonna come looking for us. All of us.
Ah, for fuck's sake.
Maybe it's not as bad as we think.
Fucking figures.
And there's no going anywhere with those things blocking our exit.
They like me, that has to help somehow.
Just 'cause they like you, doesn't mean they're gonna like the rest of us.
We're sitting ducks up here.
I know, I know. We're fucked, okay?
Oh, thanks for that, Javi.
Like we don't know that already? We can't just cut and run, not with the herd out there. Like it or not, we're fucking stuck in Richmond. Now how the fuck are we gonna put the brakes on this thing?
Joan and her people are going to be at the square, right? We need to bring the fight to them.
We go after Joan, our problems are solved.
Great. So... How do we do that?
It's a good question. Joan will probably have a full security detail with her. She'll be insulated, from us and from anybody in Richmond who doesn't agree with what she's doing.
If there are good people left in Richmond who are against what Joan's doing, we need to ask for their help. If we can talk to the people at the trial, present the case to everyone in Richmond... We might not have to do this on our own. We light the match, the people do the rest.
After we take Joan out, we're gonna need some way out of this mess. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm not much of a runner.
We've got a truck, a big one, that we used to use for walker defense. It's a little busted up, but... It's way better than nothing.
People are gonna be patrolling these streets looking for us. How far away is this truck?
I'll show you. We've been expanding, pushing out further, making the safe zone even bigger. Can't promise you they've cleared all the walkers yet, but... That's where the truck's parked.
I could spit and hit it.
We steal that thing, nothing will be able to stop us.
Steal what?
Hey!
Jesus, Javi, is that blood on your shirt? You said it wasn't that bad.
It isn't.
How the hell did this happen? Oh, you're bleeding right through that bandage.
It was Gabe's fault. Why don't you ask him what happened out there?
I was just doing what had to be done.
I'm the one who tells you what to do, not the other way around.
We got it stitched up. It's fine.
Thought you knew what you were doing.
You're still alive, aren't you?
Eleanor, can you take a look at this?
As long as he keeps it clean, it should be okay.
Would you guys stop making such a big deal about it? It happened. It's over. Move on already.
I'm just trying to make sure he's okay, Gabe.
What we need to be talking about is the plan. Oh, I have a bunch of ideas. I wanna be the one to go after Dad. Just give me a gun and I'll do whatever. I know the town. I know what Dad's gonna be thinking.
Let the grownups come up with a plan, okay, Gabe?
'Cause yours is gonna be so much better than mine. Whatever.
Who's to say you're even coming along, kid?
Are you fucking kidding me? Ah, this is bullshit! I'm not staying behind.
Gabe, take a breath.
He's my dad. I'm going.
It's going to be dangerous out there, and I don't want anyone else getting hurt.
If we get to save Dad, then getting hurt is worth it. It's worth dying for. This is more important to me than anyone else. I've got a gun, and I know how to use it.
Could you do me a favor and stop showing off for everybody? You're tough, okay? You can handle a lot of shit. You don't have to prove it all the goddamn time. Nobody here is gonna let you be a martyr, Gabe. Your life is precious.
Before you all make any decisions about who's coming and who's staying and who's gonna do what, I just wanted to say... I'm sitting this one out.
What are you talking about, Conrad?
I'm sorry about David. I am. I just don't particularly care what happens to the folks here in Richmond. It's not my community, not my problem. I got what I came here for. That's not the kind of man I wanna be. Just gotta figure it out. Who the new Conrad is.
Fine. Get the hell out of here. If you don't wanna help us, we don't want anything to do with you.
Understood. I'm gonna get some things together and find someplace to wait out the herd. I'll attract less attention if I'm by myself.
Conrad. Man.
Hey. No goodbyes. I'll see you on the other side, brother.
I'll see you.
Okay, so you went to dive-bomb Joan and save the day. Do we have to leave? This place is comfortable.
Hell yeah, we're outta here. A handful of people against... Everyone out there. Everything out there. That's doable? Probably?
I'm not gonna lie to you. This is going to be hard. But it's possible. If we stick to what we said we'd do. We've got the guns, we've got a plan, and soon we're gonna have that truck.
Hell, I'm still in.
I promised David I'd always have his back.
Let's do it.
Without Conrad, you guys need me, and you know it.
Sure as hell seems that way.
Me, Clem, Kate, and Gabe will go after the car.
Me and Eleanor, we'll get some supplies together. Here, take a walkie. I'll let everyone know when things kick off.
Ava, you take the other one and keep checking in. No matter what.
I'll get my stuff and meet you at the square.
Okay. Let's move out. Clem, you come with me to get the truck. Gabe and Kate, you guys hang back here. Be ready for anything.
Let's go.
I think I should go with you, actually.
That wasn't the plan, Gabe.
Actually, I was kind of hoping you'd be willing to watch my back on this one. Don't wanna get surprised while I'm out there.
Yeah. Okay. I guess somebody needs to be a lookout.
What? Nothing. Gabe and I will be fine back here.
There it is. Let's go. What are the chances?
I'd say about fifty-fifty.
Smartass.
Early risers. Come on, we gotta hurry and finish before more people wake up.
What are we gonna do?
We can't start the engine, not without attracting a lot of attention. Kate, you steer. The rest of us are gonna get behind the truck and push. See if we can't get some distance between us and them. Ready?
Ready.
Ready. Turns out you needed me after all, huh? I'm just saying, I know you didn't want me to come along.
Just push the damn truck. Alright?
What do you think I'm doing?
I'm doing all the work. You're the one trying to have a conversation here. That's more like it.
Don't think those guys will be able to hear the engine all the way over here. I put it in neutral. Couldn't find an ignition key in there. Guess you'll have to hotwire it. Try not to shock yourself.
Shit. I'll need something to strip the wires.
They left all their supplies lying around. Bet there'll be some tools out there somewhere. Just try to hurry, okay?
Almost there. Keep an eye out while I get it started, okay?
I'll check on the guys in the office.
Clem and I will look out for walkers.
Okay. Here goes. Wire cutter should help with this. Gotta connect the battery to the ignition. Let there be light. Oh shit. Don't get electrocuted. Don't get electrocuted.
Javi, hurry up!
Hey, let's go, now! The square's a couple of blocks away. This is a good place to wait.
Do we have enough gas?
I'm not about to turn the engine off again.
What now?
We wait for Ava to call us on the walkie.
So, nothing for us to do but... Sit and watch the sun come up.
Well, I know we've got something important to do. I'm teaching you to play euchre.
That's not a real thing.
It's a card game. Come on, it's fun.
It's nice to be driving around with a couple kids in the backseat again. Really takes you back, doesn't it? Just you and me and Gabe and Mari.
It hurts too much to think about. Even now. It's like I can't get Mari out of my head sometimes. Her voice. How smart she was. How kind.
I understand.
Ha! Gotcha.
Aw, come on. That's not even a good rule.
Still gotcha.
Guess he stopped playing it cool with her.
Hmm?
Uh, in case you haven't noticed, Gabe's got a little crush on Clementine. He li- likes her. You get it?
As long as it doesn't go anywhere.
Come on. You're saying you don't think they're adorable together?
It's complicated, Kate. Clem's got... History.
We've all got history, Javi. Every single one of us. It's so... Normal, you know? Like, as crazy as things get, as terrible and tragic and just plain stupid... There's nothing more wonderfully ordinary as two kids falling for each other. Not that they're there yet. But to feel something that intensely for another person...
When I was his age and I liked a girl, I was a fucking wreck. Sweaty palms and stomachaches and...
Boners behind math books? We knew. Every time. We knew.
Sadie? Hell on earth.
It's unfair, that's all I'm saying. That they're feeling what they're feeling right now and... When that sun gets a little higher, it's right back to the fight. I just wish he could've had a childhood, you know? I wish I could've given him that. Him and Mari, both.
All the wishing in the world isn't gonna change what the world is now. Nobody gets to be a kid anymore. Hell, you're lucky if you get to grow up.
You're right. I know you're right. I hope you know, Javi. Having you there with me, right by my side, all this time... That's what made the difference. You're so sure of what you're doing all this for. You didn't run away.
Honestly? I'm not that sure of anything right now. I'm just trying to do the right thing here.
I get it. There is no graceful way to say this, so I'm just gonna say it. I know we've had moments, you and I. And they're always... A little hot and a little confusing and... Maybe some of them haven't meant anything at all, but... Before whatever happens tomorrow happens... I need you to know... Whenever this... Thing is between us... I want to give it a chance. And I know the fact that David is back in our lives now makes this whole thing a little more... Complicated, but... Do you feel the same way? I'd really like to know.
I'm sorry, Kate. I-
Oh... God.
I just... Can't see it. Between us.
So, all those times you said stuff, I was just imagining it? Years together, on the road. The looks. The hints of something more.
David's not just some guy in our lives. He's my brother. I don't see him being okay with this, ever. I can't do that to him.
So, you're saying you do feel something?
It doesn't matter, Kate. It can't go anywhere.
I guess a part of me always knew you didn't feel the same way. God knows I pushed you a couple times, but... You always said no. I guess I have to finally listen.
Javi, it's an execution over here. She's planning to hang David in front of the whole crowd. You've gotta get over here, now! Don't bring the truck. If they see it, they'll kill him right away. If you can just get into the square-
Shit. We gotta get over there, now! Keep the walkie close by. We'll tell you as soon as we've got David. Then you can drive into the square and pick us up. It's... Probably better that you stay here. Considering you won't say a single word to me.
Oh, I'll say a word to you, all right. But I'm pretty sure you're not gonna like it.
Just... Stay out of sight. We'll be in touch as soon as we can.
Nothing else from Ava?
Nope. And it sounds like a crowd out there.
It sounded like Ava got cut off by something. Or somebody. Wish we had some idea of what we're heading into. Like, is the whole plan shot, or did she just have a little setback? I hate not knowing.
Could be Tripp and Eleanor had second thoughts about this whole thing. It's not their fight.
Maybe.
No way. They wouldn't have done that to us.
You never know with some people.
We're not gonna know what went wrong until we actually do this thing. So, let's do it already.
You ready?
Ready as I'm gonna be.
Glad to hear it.
Shit. We can't wait for the others, can we?
I'm sorry to have to show you this, truly I am, but you all need to see! Just look what he's done! He murdered these men in cold blood. I saw him murder Lonny. With my own eyes. Some of the best men I ever knew, cut down in their prime. Is this who we want in charge? Someone this reckless? This cruel? Not if I have anything to do with it!
Can't believe this is really happening. She's gonna kill him. She can't do this to him. He's kept him safe.
I knew Joan was willing to fight dirty, but... This is taking it to the next level. We gotta be ready to match her game.
I think you're right.
Javier! I'd heard you were planning to crash our little party. Why did you come on up here? Show your face to everyone. I'm sure these people would like to hear what you have to say.
Fuck that, and fuck you, Joan. I don't have anything to say to someone who shit talks my family.
Don't make this harder on yourself, Javier. Get up here, now!
She knows we're here now, we might as well.
I had a very interesting conversation with your friend Eleanor last night. Isn't that right, Eleanor?
That's... That's right.
She said you were coming here to rally the people against me. Convince them that I was no good for Richmond. Don't know how you thought you were going to pull it off. Considering it's all of us against the three of you.
If you knew what we were coming here to do, why go ahead with this? Why put a noose around my brother's neck?
This community deserves justice, and they're going to get it. One way or the other. Here in Richmond, people who put themselves before the group don't last long. Bring them out!
Get away from me!
You're making a mistake.
Ava!
Oh no.
They had them this whole time.
David wanted to tear this whole place down. He told his people where to find our gun supply, and sure enough, they picked us clean. You really thought you could ride into town and stage a coup? With our own damn weapons? Something like that. I can't just let it go. You've put me in a no-win situation here, so I'm gonna do the same thing to you. Both of them deserve to die for their crimes. However, Javi... I'll let you spare one of them, just one.
No!
Hell no!
Joan! Don't!
Not after what they tried to do. You may be guilty of bringing them into this, but they chose to go along with it.
You don't have to do any of this. They know they messed up. They shouldn't have to die for it.
You don't make the rules around here. I do.
Joan, are you sure about this? We never agreed to killing all these people.
It's really up to Javi, isn't it? All eyes are on you. Maybe this will help you make up your mind. Boys? Come on, Javi. Who's it gonna be? Your friend or your brother's lieutenant?
Let Ava live. David believes in her, and so do I.
Javi! No!
I fucking trusted you, Javi. And now you're throwing me under the bus? You go to hell.
Shoot her.
Wait! I said don't shoot Ava!
You did, but there's something else you need to understand. Betrayal.
Joan, think about what you're doing. Ava's one of us. You can't fucking do this!
This is fucked. I can do anything I want. You brought this on yourself. Do it.
Joan. No!
Oh my god. They really shot her!
God damn it.
Now, David, it's your turn.
I can't believe this. This isn't how we do things. This is madness!
Stop her, Clint! Is this the process you trusted?
No!
Think about this, Javi. You know what's gonna happen here. You ready for that?
We don't murder in Richmond. We exile. That's how we've always done things. How about you take David and the rest of your people and just get the hell out? Go far away from Richmond, and then whatever you do is up to you.
I'm sure the herd outside would like that.
She thinks she's sending us out there to die.
She's counting on it.
Everybody put your guns away. We're gonna handle this peacefully. Don't listen to them, Javi. They're fucking butchers. Oh, shoot that bitch! Take her out! She did- We're leaving. All of us. Right now.
I didn't say you could go.
Doesn't matter if you did. This is how it needs to happen. Clint? What are you- I don't believe any of you. Take your tail and shove it.
They're liars, Clint. All of them.
One step closer, and I kill him. I swear I will.
Go ahead and shoot then. I warned you. They can't be trusted.
What the fuck? Come on, David. Stop a second and think about this. I'm done thinking. Ava was the best soldier I ever met. She didn't deserve this. Fucking hag! Get back here! Gabe, I need you to cover me. We gotta make things right.
Okay.
He needs you. Not me. Go on.
Thanks.
Shit, I gotta help her.
God damn it! Just go. I'll try and cover you.
I knew David was gonna do something to fuck this up. I told you what he was like. When are you gonna start believing me? Shh, get down!
I hear gunfire. What the hell is going on over there? Are you guys okay?
We need to get the fuck out of here, right now. Can you bring the truck over?
On my way.
Wow, this is a hell of a situation, isn't it? Don't look so surprised, okay?
Conrad! You have no fucking idea how glad I am to see you.
Yeah, yeah, don't get all mushy. I really was headed out, but something made me turn back. Good thing I did, huh?
It's Kate. She's coming for us.
Oh shit! Conrad! Oh god!
Javi, you've gotta get over there before-
Kate! Kate!